...wire fencing for bird and fowl enclosures ripped open. If you are finding animal scat filled with hair. If you've discovered single track paw prints, then there is a good chance that there are coyotes in your area. And the safest course of action for you, your family, and your neighbors is to learn to live with coyotes.
This is Officer Boswell, can I help you?
Every year, the Animal Services Department of the City of Los Angeles receives numerous complaints about coyotes.
In the past year, we've had approximately 800 complaints citywide encompassing everything from sightings to pet attacks to just anything that you might find a coyote doing. The coyote policy of the City of Los Angeles is basically to do what we can to discourage coyote forays into our neighborhoods and try to live with the coyotes rather than against them.
Coyotes are most abundant in and around the foothills and on large tracts of open land. The coyotes of Los Angeles have taken to using the aqueducts as their own private superhighway, making it possible for them to hunt over a vast area of land. Coyotes are nocturnal, basically sleeping during the day and doing most of their hunting in the early evening, night, and early morning. But coyotes are opportunistic hunters. They will change their habits to suit their needs.
Many complaints we receive are coyotes roaming the neighborhood at maybe 1 o'clock in the afternoon. A very common thing to hear complaints about the animals being taken during the day.
Coyotes in the wild have a wide variety of eating habits that consist of small mammals, insects, reptiles, birds and eggs, fruits and berries, and even deer. In the city suburbs, the coyote menu of edible items increases dramatically, such as rodents or small mammals that hide in unkept overgrown lawns and gardens, as well as fallen fruit. And, small pets such as cats and dogs can also fall prey to coyotes. Also, human garbage, including plastic, eggshells, cloth, and any other edible remains. The coyote has easily adjusted his eating habits to what is available in our communities. For this reason, he is a difficult predator to deal with.
The coyote problem is a neighborhood problem, it's an individual problem, and to some extent it is a municipal problem. You as the individual notice that you begin to have coyote problems. You may or may not be aware of people around you, what type of issues they're having, but it's only through a neighborhood effort ultimately that you will be able to discourage a lot of the coyote forays into your neighborhood. Hi there.
Hi.
Hi, Troy Boswell.
Hi.
Hi. If you begin to notice problems with coyotes or wildlife, it is absolutely essential that you take steps early to begin to resolve these issues.
So, down here is where the, um, the attack took place.
Okay.
Um, I'm not sure exactly where. I could hear it, but I couldn't see it.
Alright.
And so, I panicked and I started screaming for this dog. Zora, zora, zora! And it, you know, she wasn't coming up. And then, finally, I saw her sort of staggering up the hill.
The barking of a small pet will often attract a coyote. And when the coyote is hungry, it might go to extreme lengths, even attacking and stealing your pet right before your very eyes.
So I came out here and all of a sudden I heard a rustling of my bougainvillea bush. Zuzu then went to get her chew stick and literally something just brushed past me, grabbed Zuzu, and just so literally took just three steps over the wall, across the street, and I just went running across the street and, you know, dug myself up on that hill and right under there. I just thought somehow I could get her and I, and I heard her stop screaming.
Once a coyote has staked out your home, you have to be forever vigilant to protect your pets.
My three dogs were on the front porch. My little other dog that was attacked was sitting on the fountain. And I came right over here and rolled up the hose. And I was walking up and my three dogs were still on the front porch. And Bogey, instead of being on the fountain, was laying right here in the driveway. And so, in the amount of time it took me to wheel the hose in, a coyote must have taken my dog from the fountain and attacked him that quick and run off because I guess he saw that I was right there.
In the Santa Monica Mountains, Dr. Seth Riley listens for the audio signals transmitted from a collar worn by a coyote in the wild. With this information, he can determine the coyote's daily routine and its interaction with people. Dr. Riley hopes that this study will lead to a better understanding of coyotes and a humane and successful approach to living with them. While this study and an attempt to understand coyotes is new, coyotes themselves have been around for a long time.
Coyotes actually originated right here in North America. They are a pretty old species, one to two million years old. Um, and they, um, many other species sort of came over to, to North America or to the Americas from the Old World, like wolves, for example. Uh, but coyotes are, are North American original.
Serious coyote eradication began in the mid-19th century when ranchers started raising livestock on the American Prairies. At the turn of the century, wool growers joined the ranchers in their attempt to eliminate the pest. Between 1915 and 1947, almost 2 million coyotes were destroyed. This massive effort at eradication was implemented to its fullest extent in Klamath County, Oregon. By 1947, there was not a single coyote left in the whole county. But, there were field mice. Without coyotes to prey on them, without natural control, the rodent population exploded. The cost and loss crops soared into the millions of dollars, far more damage than had ever been caused by coyotes. In the end, Klamath County, Oregon had to reintroduce the coyote into the area to maintain ecological balance.
Coyotes can have a big impact on other species. They definitely eat, like I said, they definitely eat small mammals and rabbits, and they can have impacts on other carnivores. So they definitely have an important role in the ecosystem.
While the coyote is important in nature's scheme of things, attempts to eradicate the species have had another surprising effect.
More recent years, say the last 50 years or so, they've spread out to the Midwest and even to the East.
Studies in national parks have shown the best ways to control coyote populations.
Eradication of coyotes has been tried over and over in many different areas and it's generally been very unsuccessful. And I think it's partly because, again, they're, they're very adaptable and they can, they can vary their reproductive rate so if they're, if a lot of animals are getting removed, then they produce a lot of animals. And so, generally, trying to wipe out coyotes has, has just not been effective.
Since killing coyotes is not a solution to the problem, we must have a better understanding of their lifestyle. Coyotes tend to live in small family groups, made up mostly of parents and young pups. Some studies show that coyotes mate for life. Female coyotes are fertile for only one week during the year. Thus, most pups are generally born in late April or early May. It is while the pups are being raised that the coyote pack is busiest gathering food.
Coyotes become especially active during the mid-spring through the late summer when they have their litters. And of course, they need to raise these litters and food requirements go way up.
Coyote litters are between six to eight pups. They will stay approximately six months with their parents, learning how to hunt for food and how to stay alive.
The coyote is a predator and a very adaptable predator that will take advantage of any food source that it can get. What they do is they actually go throughout their range, searching all the places where they found food before. And, uh, if it's dog food, then that's what they're gonna be searching out. If it's fruit, they're gonna be searching that out. If it's garbage, they're gonna be going through their range, checking every place that they've got, um, food before, and then investigating new places.
When the pups reach maturity, the males will leave the pack and stake out their own hunting and living territory. The females will often stay to help raise the next litter.
As a species, coyotes are amazingly successful, and there's no reason to think that, that that's gonna change anytime soon.
So, how do we deal with coyotes? What are the do's and don'ts of keeping our homes and pets safe from this persistent pest?
If you're having trouble with animals raiding your trash cans, prevent the lid from, uh, coming up. You can always strap it down with some type of bungee cord or, or similar type of thing. Also, you might be able to spritz a little bit of ammonia or something like that, something to make it unpleasant. Cayenne pepper, anything that you feel might, uh, cause an unpleasant smell or sensation to an animal that might be raiding your garbage.
Okay, well, here are our garbage cans as they are now. But we are going to, uh, have them enclosed here with a fence. We're gonna put a, a fence that will have two doors that will open up, so they'll be completely enclosed.
If you have fruit trees in and around your home, collect the fruit before or as soon as it falls to the ground. If you have a home garden, keep it properly fenced. And use something stronger than chicken wire, because a coyote can chew right through it. Fences properly constructed are also a good deterrent against coyotes. A local professional fencing contractor can help with the specific enclosure needs of your home.
Coyotes can scale a six to eight foot chain link fence with no problem. However, if you have an angled addition mounted at the top of the fence, of course, check with your zoning to make sure that this is a legal thing to do. Uh, but most fence companies are familiar with an angled addition that might make it more difficult for a coyote to, to jump over. Also, to prevent coyotes from digging under, you can extend a chain link apron in the dirt that extend down three to four feet. That will prevent them from digging under.
And we have wire and fencing around the perimeter of the property. We then have another row of fencing going into the ground, so the coyotes cannot dig under the ground.
Another approach to fencing is the coyote roller, designed to stop a coyote or any wild animal from jumping over your fence. Besides good fencing, there are other deterrents that can be effective against coyotes. Randomly blinking lights or water sprinklers that are activated by sound or movement can deter wildlife.
Such things as motion sensor devices and sprinkler devices, lights that come on at unexpected times. Some people hook motion sensor devices up to a radio station or a stereo or something. So, um, if you get creative, you can oftentimes scare off a lot of these animals before they become a real problem. The only way to caution to that is that these animals do get used to just about everything. So if you don't change things up and change them often, you will quickly find yourself in the same position.
Right now, for, try to keep the coyotes off the property, we're putting in motion detectors on lights for the hillside. So if something comes by, the, the lights will go off and hopefully deter them. And, uh, probably hook it up with some kind of a bell system, so when the lights go off, a bell go off and maybe scare them off.
Never leave pet food sitting outside. Once your pets have eaten, bring eating and drinking bowls inside the house. Also, keep all pets inside the house or in an extremely secure enclosure.
What we've decided to do is to stay with the dogs when we let them out. That's the major precaution we're taking. It won't solve the coyote problem, but it'll give my pets protection.
When you are off your property, walk your pet with a leash. If your dog gives chase, the coyote will often lead the animal into a trap that can wound or kill your pet.
I recommend that maybe you carry something such as a air horn or something similar, just to protect yourself a little better. In general, when you encounter any, what you consider threatening wildlife, it is always a bad idea to turn and run. That is often the trigger that causes the animal to, um, attack when it might not otherwise. Um, should you see a coyote or a mountain lion or bobcat, you need to stand your ground and act threatening back. And that's not to say you need to chase the animal or run at it to scare it, but make yourself as large as possible, speak in a low, loud tone, and just make your presence known.
Also, there are some important things you should not do. Never allow your pets to roam away from the house. They can easily fall prey to a coyote. Do not leave garbage containers open. Not only will it attract coyotes, but once it becomes a source of food, they will return to it again and again, regardless of how you secure it. Do not leave trash out for a number of days. Take the garbage out the night before or early that morning for pickup. The most difficult, but most important thing not to do, never feed a coyote. You endanger yourself, your children, and everyone in your community. Coyotes that lose their fear of people become bold and may attack children and grownups if they are not offered the food they have been accustomed to getting from others.
Any animal that is fed by, by humans loses their fear of people. Uh, when they lose their fear of people, they become a threat to those individuals and other individuals around. It changes their behavior. Uh, it causes them to act in an unnatural way, viewing people as a, a way to get food rather than something to fear. In many instances, these animals have to be removed for the public safety, uh, simply because it's just too dangerous to have them there.
The best defense against coyotes is to secure your home with the proper fencing and deterrent devices. Keep your pets indoors, or when outdoors, on a leash. Secure or store all possible food. And above all, never feed a coyote. If you need more information or having a problem with coyotes, please call this number.
All right, this will be the forum call for Council meeting for today, Tuesday, April 13th. Thank you, Mr. Alafon, Mrs. Kardanis, Mr. Weezer, Mr. Coria, Mr. O'Callaghan, Mr. Zine, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Garcetti will be leaving. Please take him off the queue. Mr. Weezer, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Hassan. We're at seven. We need three more members, please, to come to council chambers. Mr. Corret, Mr. Labonge, Mr. Parks. Absent today will be Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Smith. So we'll get to the bare form. Uh, Mr. Wesson, please come to council chambers. And Mr. Wesson. So we can begin our meeting for Tuesday, April 13th. Again, we need Mr. Corret, please come to council chambers. Mr. Labonge, Mr. Parks. Please come to council chambers. And Mr. Wesson. So we can begin our meeting for Tuesday, April 13th. Again, we need Mr. Corret, please come to council chambers. Mr. Labonge, Mr. Parks. Please come to council chambers. And Mr. Wesson. So we can begin our meeting for Tuesday, April 13th. Again, we need Mr. Corret, please come to council chambers. Mr. Labonge, Mr. Parks. Please come to council chambers. And Mr. Wesson. So we can begin our meeting for Tuesday, April 13th. Again, we need Mr. Corret, please come to council chambers. Mr. Labonge, Mr. Parks. Please come to council chambers. And Mr. Wesson. So we can begin our meeting for Tuesday, April 13th. Again, we need Mr. Corret, please come to council chambers. Mr. Labonge, Mr. Parks. Please come to council chambers. And Mr. Wesson. So we can begin our meeting for Tuesday, April 13th. Again, we need Mr. Corret, please come to council chambers. Mr. Labonge, Mr. Parks. Please come to council chambers. And Mr. Wesson. So we can begin our meeting for Tuesday, April 13th. Again, we need Mr. Corret, please come to council chambers. Mr. Park is here. Thank you, Mr. Park. Mr. Wesson, we're at a bare form this afternoon. We're at eight members. Mr. Corret, please come to council chambers. And Mr. Labonge is en route to council chambers. So he was our ten to begin our meeting. Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Mr. Labonge has arrived. Nine members. We need one more member to please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts and Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. And Mr. Wesson. So we can begin our meeting for Tuesday, April 13th. Again, we need Mr. Corretts, please come to council chambers. Mr. Labonge, Mr. Parks. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Parks is here. Thank you, Mr. Parks. Mr. Wesson, we're at a bare form this afternoon. We're at eight members. Mr. Corretts, please come to council chambers. And Mr. Labonge is en route to council chambers. So he was our ten to begin our meeting. Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Mr. Labonge has arrived. Nine members. We need one more member to please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts and Mr. Wesson. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Please come to council chambers. Mr. Corretts, Mr. Wessons. Mr. Corretts has just arrived. Thank you, Mr. Corretts. Let's turn our ten members, please, to the live. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna begin our council meeting in just a moment. Hello and welcome to Los Angeles City Council Chambers. This is Tuesday, April 13th. Council meets three times a week, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. All meetings are open to the public. For those of you who cannot make it to City Hall, meetings are televised via cable, Channel 35, or can be viewed by visiting our website, la-city.org. Audio for our meetings is available on council phone 213-621-CITY. That's 213-621-CITY. I'm Councilmember Dennis Zine, chairing the meeting today. Uh, we are starting today late due to the funeral services for Los Angeles Police Officer, United States Marine RJ Cottle. We just completed services at the cathedral. Uh, many of the council members were in attendance for the services for Officer Cottle, a distinguished member of the Los Angeles Police Department and a United States Marine Sergeant Major. May he rest in peace. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alacant, Cardenas, Hawn, Weezer, Corretts, Correa, Labonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Smith, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti. Ten members present. Anna Quan, Ms. President.
Very well. If you are here in chambers or in Van Nuys or San Pedro and you wish to speak on an item, please fill out a speaking card and have that card turned in before that item is called. Once items are called, we will not accept any additional cards for those particular items. Again, if you're here to speak on an item, fill out a card, have that card submitted, and before we call that matter, once the matter is called, we will not accept any additional speaking cards. Let's go through the agenda, please.
First order of business is approval of the minutes.
Mr. Parks, uh, seconded by Mr. Rosenthal.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Correa, followed by Mr. Corretts.
Ms. President, this is Tuesday, and there is a flag salute.
Flag salute, uh, Mr. Parks, Councilmember Parks. Please lead us in the flag salute. All please stand.
Would everyone stand, uh, face the flag, place their right hand over their heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Clerk, let's proceed.
Ms. President, before beginning the regular agenda, there are a number of items to be continued. Uh, there is a request to continue Items Seven and Eight one day to April 14th.
Without... Mr. Parks?
Mr. Perry would like Number Four continued to Friday.
Without opposition, we will continue. Number Four till Friday, and Seven and Eight to tomorrow.
There is also a request to refer Item 10 back to the Information Technology and Government Affairs Committee.
That is without opposition. That is gonna be referred back.
And one last continuation, Item 13, which is on the continuation agenda, there is a request to continue that to Friday, April 16th.
That'll also be continued. No opposition on that. Very well.
On the regular agenda, Item One is a street lighting district ordinance notice for public hearing.
No cards on that matter. On Number One, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
And, uh, the ordinance will go over one week to April 20th.
Right. Next item, please.
Items Two and Three are items to which public hearings have been held. Item Three is a commission appointment. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Let's hold that momentarily. We'll get to that as soon as we go through the agenda.
And on Item Two, there is no action required on that today.
All right, so Two's cleared, and we'll hold Three.
Items Four through Twelve, with the exception of the items that have been called, uh, continued, are items to which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Uh, Four through Twelve, Mr. Corretts.
I'd like to call Item Nine special at the request of Councilmember Weezer.
Nine special? Any other specials, colleagues? No other specials? Very well.
Ms. President, you do have cards on Five, Six, and Eleven.
Then let's call the ones that we have cards special. Remaining items?
Twit leave, Item Twelve only.
Then open that roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next item, please.
Uh, that does take care of the items called special and continued. That would take you back to public comment, or do you wish to take up the commissioner at this time?
Let's do the commissioner first. I'm sure that our commissioner nominee has other things to do today. So would you please come forward?
This is Item Three, the, uh, the appointment of Mr. Richard Druyan to the Board of Police Commissioners.
Very well. Uh, public safety folk, public safety representatives. Mr. Smith is not here today. Uh, Mr. Perry's not here today. Well, I'm on the Public Safety Committee, so why don't you tell us a little background on why you wanna be a police commissioner?
Thank you. Um, my name is Richard Druyan. Uh, I am a partner at the Los Angeles Bureau of Mungar, Tolz, and Olson. I formerly served two terms in the United States Attorney's Office, as, once as the Chief of Criminal Division, twice as the Chief Assistant. I was also a Deputy General Counsel of the, uh, Christopher Commission, and I was the General Counsel of the Rampart Independent Review Panel. Um, I've had a long-term interest in law enforcement, as a result of my background with the United States Attorney's Office. I've worked with local and federal law enforcement for over fourteen years. Um, I've also twice been involved in some of the reform efforts, uh, through the panels. Um, and I have a longstanding interest in, uh, the Los Angeles Police Department and the progress it's made and the reforms that have been instituted, and I look forward to having the opportunity to serve on the commission.
So with that experience, you, uh, have some qualifications.
I, I certainly think so, sir.
I know. I, uh, was at the Public Safety Committee. We interviewed you, and you were very impressive. Uh, Mr. Labonge.
Thank you very much. For more than all that great legal work, this is a man from the San Fernando Valley, his family from the San Fernando Valley, a graduate of Taft High School, uh, still lives in the San Fernando Valley, has great history of knowledge of the Los Angeles Police Department in the last many years, that has shown us, uh, positive change from their great challenges there. So, uh, we had a great office visit, but it's always great to stand and support someone who grew up in Los Angeles, has seen the city change. We did talk about traffic, uh, which is something the Los Angeles Police Department, uh, needs, uh, many areas of need to deal with, but strongly, strongly endorse, uh, Mayor Viva Gosa's nominee for the police commission.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Mr. Rosenthal.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, the Christopher Commission is, is quite a history going back to that, and I appreciate that. How are you with numbers, budgets, adding money and subtracting money, that kind of issue?
Um, I would say I don't have a lot of experience running large organizations, although the United States Attorney's Office, we had to do some budgeting, but, uh, that was largely dictated by Washington, uh, was what we were gonna get and what we could spend. Um, I don't have a lot of experience in, uh, oversight, uh, budget matters, although I've served on finance committees for, uh, public interest organizations. I understand that budget issues and, uh, the crisis we're facing in the city is gonna be one of the key challenges for the Los Angeles Police Department going forward.
And I appreciate you saying that because it is the big deal. Um, look, uh, without our officers, we wouldn't be safe. Um, we've all been very strong in supporting, uh, having a, a force that, that is meaningful enough for a big city like this, but, and we're in the worst of times financially. And what you have to do, as this commission frankly, is look at spreadsheets, okay? You have to say, does the three-day work week still work? Does the four-day work week, five-day? What about overtime? Should some people be on salaries that are following things beyond the clock, or should they not? Some of these issues will be dealing with the police union, with its history and its relationships, and they're all good guys, but we're in a new day, and so we have to take a look at it and take a deep breath and see how do we serve our community, and at the same time, how do we cut back on costs? I don't know if that Times piece was accurate or not, but you've read it and I've read it, and the bottom line it said is that they'll let a case go cold because they gotta take time off because they're overtime. That's nuts. Is that how you run, uh, a crime situation? It's nobody's fault, it's just that we're in an era now, in an age now, where we have to think out of the box, we have to look at every penny, and we have to see if we need to restructure or take a deep breath and look at union relationships. Are you up to that?
I, I certainly think I am. I, I understand that. I, I agree with you. That is the critical mission we have going forward, is to make sure that we are operating the department as efficiently, as effectively as we can in this day of limits. Uh, I agree with everything Councilmember Rosenthal said.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. In conclusion, any other final comments before the vote is taken?
Well, it's an honor to be here. Um, I certainly look forward to having the opportunity to work with the members of this council and work with the department, and, uh, serve as a police commissioner.
Very well. With that, colleagues, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Very well. Thank you very much. Congratulations, Commissioner.
Thank you very much.
So now you know where you're gonna spend Tuesday mornings at the police commission meeting. All right, uh, next item, please.
Uh, Ms. President, do you wish to take a public comment at this time?
We'll do a public comment now. Walter Bechtel. Walter Bechtel, public comment, sir.
Morning. I didn't really have anything to say today. Um, I was... Can I just pass this on to somebody else? I didn't really have anything else to say, other than the fact that, um, you people still haven't, uh, made your settlement with me about the, um, the situations I already talked about, so, um, like I said before, if you want to make your settlement with me, uh, I can help the city, but if you don't, I can't do anything.
Thank you, Mr. Bechtel. Barry Kramer. Barry Kramer. Barry Kramer in the audience. No Barry Kramer? Next speaker. Oliver Summers. Oliver Summers? Are you Barry Kramer?
Nope.
You're Oliver Summers.
I am Oliver Summers.
There you go, sir. Go ahead.
Uh, good morning, everybody. Uh, thank you for hearing us. Uh, obviously, I'd come to talk about, uh, Item 13, which got pushed, so I would like to just make a general comment about, uh, the medical cannabis community that's in L.A. This ordinance that you guys have passed is very convoluted and very, very confusing, and, um, I am just trying to get clarification on some things. I've called my councilman, I've called City Attorney's Office over fifty times in the past three weeks. All I need is some answers for some clarification so that I can follow the ordinance and follow the law the way you guys have written it. So basically, I would just hopefully ask this, uh, council to perhaps maybe encourage the City Attorney's Office to create a representative for the medical cannabis people so that we can direct our questions to. We have so many questions. This flow chart that you guys have on the, uh, the fee schedule shows that if there's any tiny little abnormality, we are, uh, rejected and sent to the back of the list. We would very much like to avoid that by following all the laws possible. So if you could just have somebody, anybody, that would be able to take our questions, our emails, anything, so that we can have some answers. That's all I, uh, hope to hear from, and then also, uh, just with this fee ordinance, where's the money for Los Angeles from us? We, uh, we're willing to help give you guys. We are the only booming industry in this entire city right now. We are willing to give you guys money to help pay for lots and lots of people. I'm sure the LAPD, I'm sure many of the sanitation workers would appreciate a nice little chunk of change coming in their way, free from us. But anyway, thanks very much, folks, and again, please, if we could just get somebody to help us answer our questions, that would be great.
Thank you. Jacob Miller.
Morning, everybody. Uh, my name is, uh, Jacob Miller, Department, uh, Animal Care Technician with the Department of Animal Services for the last eight and a half years. Uh, behind me, I have one of our canvassers here, and that's what we're here to speak to you about. Um, back about a month ago, we had a Animal Services Commission meeting, uh, where we had asked, um, that they try to, uh, do their best to keep our canvassers on the payroll and doing their jobs, which is providing humane education for the city of Los Angeles and the only major revenue stream for our department. Um, as it stands, one of the biggest obstacles in their way is not being able to use credit card machines in the field. The greatest prohibitor of this was the cost, and a, uh, a very generous organization raised their hand and offered to go ahead and pay for these credit card machines. Upon following up on, uh, the process about getting these machines into canvasser hands, I was told by our administration that they're waiting for a bank switchover. Apparently, I guess we're switching banks from, uh, Wachovia to Wells Fargo. My question is, though, is that, you know, if it, if it has to do with the language between the banks and our computer systems, if we already know we're going to Wells Fargo, why isn't our administration just going ahead and taking the steps, calling up Wells Fargo, finding out what is needed, so we can get this ball rolling? If they get the information out to this group, they can go ahead and purchase these machines, we can have them handy as soon as the bank switchover is done, we can get them into credit card, we can get them into the, uh, canvasser's hands, uh, day one, and, uh, we can start raking in the dough. I would have to say that probably over fifty percent of the people that these canvassers come and knock on the doors for, one of the greatest reasons why they cannot pay then and there for their license is because they can't, they can't use their credit card out in the field. We just wanna know what's going on with this, and we want you guys to, uh, try and talk to our administration so we can get this ball rolling. Because the sooner we get these credit card machines in the hands of the canvassers, the sooner we can be bringing in more dough for the city. Uh, as it stands right now, these guys fully fund their salaries, despite what the numbers are saying. They do fully fund their salaries, and even at the current, uh, tactics that they use, they're, they're set to make even more money for the city. So let's get this ball rolling. Thank you very much.
Candero Morais.
Good morning, Mr. President, councilmembers. Uh, last Wednesday, I was here and I was talking about how, uh, the city is in crisis and that we needed to work together, uh, not only to counsel the mayor, uh, the neighborhood councils and others, and then I was attacked, I was, uh, I was, it was stated that I was pandering, and I'm not gonna mention the councilman's name, but I'll refer to the sixth district. Uh, and what I asked was that if he would be willing to honor a commitment that his office had made to an individual who had contributed for over fifty years to his district. Um, a few months ago, you folks met a few of the business owners that were, uh, honored by him, Luigi the tailor, uh, Giovanni the haircut man, uh, Peter the shulman, and this individual who has given each and every year to the community, especially this year, when there was no money from the city council, there was no money from the neighborhood council, he gave almost $5,000 to make sure that over 500 kids and 200 parents received Christmas. He made sure that every child had a toy. He made sure that every child had a, a bag of goodies. He made sure the parents had something. And here we are, worked, each and every one of you work with an individual like this in your community. These are the kind of people that you look for in your community. Mr. Zine, I've worked in your community and at the Walmart. We honored Walmart and the great things that, and the, uh, employees that worked there that are doing things. So, again, Mr. Representative from the sixth district, I'll ask you, as I've asked your, uh, staff for the last eight months, to please honor this gentleman for his kindness, for his, his, uh, good works. Uh, again, he's helping people, kids that look like me and you, uh, Mr. Councilman from the sixth district, uh, this is a gentleman that gives and gives and continues to give. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, good morning, councilmembers. My name is Phil Jennerjohn. I'm currently a candidate for, uh, the United States Congress, 33rd Congressional District. Uh, my opponent is the State Assembly Member Karen Bass. I'm here today with some, uh, criticism of the socialism that exists in Los Angeles city government. For example, tyrannical city council that votes to triple the parking meter rates, driving customers away from streetfront businesses. Those businesses lose income, they cut jobs, and eventually they fail, and those jobs are gone forever. This tyrannical city government also decided to raise your DWP rates. This is just another hidden tax that they are inflicting on taxpayers and voters here in Los Angeles. Voters who are struggling to get by in an economy that has been devastated, 14% unemployment, and block after block of failed businesses, are usually a symptom that your city is being led by socialist leaders. Now finally, the ultimate insult. Jet-setting, celebrity-worshipping Mayor Antonio Viegosa announces that because of his absolute and total financial incompetence, that 4,000 city employees need to lose their jobs. This is tyranny in its purest form. I ask all city employees to join me in declaring their freedom from a tyrannical city government. In just a few moments, I'm going to go across the street and deliver the final version of the recall petition to the city clerk's office. If accepted, the recall begins April 20th. Visit the website, recallcityhall.org, download the petition, sign them, get your friends, family, and coworkers to sign them. Voters of the city, together we can do this. Thank you.
Richard Robinson.
Because the nattering nabobs of negativism, the heeny-pennies, the chicken littles, and YQKers are problematic, I am speaking in defense of our president, who today is in D.C. with 47 world leaders, working on a plan to make the world safe from loose nukes. Sir, since Barack took office, factory output is up for eight consecutive months. Housing starts are up, the sub crisis is ending, the stock market is holding steady at $11,000. It should, in the summer, indicate that that steadiness is positioned as for a bullish in favor of democracy and freedom, federal programs reminiscent of Roosevelt's New Deal, bringing federal, state, county, and municipal projects, repairing our nation's bridges, freeways, cleaning our nation's streams, evolving into the green economy that we anticipate seeing tens of thousands of kids becoming ecologists, building careers, making our country safe from, the world safe from global warming.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Michael Kerian. Michael Kerian? Michael Kerian not here? Michael Kerian. Jimmy O'Green. Jimmy O'Green? Jimmy O'Green not here? Duke Smith? Duke Smith is here. Mr. Smith.
Good afternoon, good morning. I came here today to talk to you folks about this ordinance for proposition, for item number 13, the medical marijuana ordinance. I wanna first tell you a little bit about myself. I am a stay-at-home dad, adoptive father of two special needs children. I have retired to be a stay-at-home dad, and I feel that changing the world comes with one person at a time. I look at this ordinance that you folks have written, and I have two friends of mine who are pleading with me to help them get assistance from James Devine in suing the city. One is blind, the other one is a quadriplegic. Both use medical marijuana as their medicine. The one who's blind will no longer be able to go to more than one store, will have to go to that one closest to his house, or the one his wife drives him too far away, but he'll have to choose one. The one who's a quadriplegic couldn't begin to help in cultivating, and yet you guys continue to push through this bad ordinance. I told you when you passed the moratorium, it was too little, too late, badly flawed, would cost you money. I'm telling you now, if you don't search your hearts and souls in the next few days and postpone this thing and pass an ordinance that works, it will waste more of the city's money in trying to defend an ordinance that is not enforceable. I am pleading with you to search your souls, search your conscience, make this medicine available for patients. If you don't, you're bringing more problems to this city that'll cost us more money. And then I really wonder, are you guys trying to help us? Are you just trying to do what you wanna do to appease the soundbites that'll get you reelected? Please, search your conscience, search your souls. Thank you very much.
Dr. Williams.
Dr. Clyde Williams. 4115 Barrett Road, El Sereno, Northeast L.A. Well, we've had DWP, but look forward to the next one. Bureau of Sanitation has a stormwater program, but they use the same tactics as DWP. That is, they bundle various things that don't relate to each other together and get them passed, but then they do piecemealing and take one little project, one little project, one little project, until we find that they have successfully implemented their $8 billion capital improvement project for stormwater. And, oh, by the way, it'll cost 500 million a year to operate and maintain it. Somebody has to clean the drains. So in the same way that you are reviewing DWP, I would highly recommend that you put an inspector general, ratepayers advocate, somebody, to review and publicly disclose what's going on in the stormwater program for the city of Los Angeles. This will work out to about 600 to 700 or more dollars per parcel, per year, for the next 100 years. I don't have to wait that long. So, piecemealing. Why does DWP do it? In the same way, bureaucrats like to get a crisis created and then solve the crisis and get somebody to approve something that's gonna last a long time. So I'd highly recommend that the city council request the Public Works Department, our board, to provide them with a full documentation regarding the stormwater program and how much it's going to cost and our abilities to pay for it, not just for this year, but for the next 100 years. Thank you.
Not here. Tarek Tabash? Not here. Lan To Hang? Not here. You are here.
Good morning, Council. My name is Lan Tai Huang. I would like to say something today regarding about business transaction and conflict in check. I received a police commission permit issue on the April 5, 2010, for Lan Tai Huang and Victor Anthony William. The name company, Victor King One, the address, the 401 West Third Street, San Pedro, California, 90731. The second location business unit is Lan Tai Huang, Victor Anthony William, Victor King One, and the address, 571 West Third Street, San Pedro, California, 90731. The third location is for Lan Tai Huang and Victor Anthony William. The name company, Victor King Two, the address, 354 West Ninth Street, San Pedro, California, 90731. I understand the police work very hard to investigation before issued a land permit for people to business it. So I am a new owner for the business engaged with the city lot angle, and our business issue on the November 25, 2009. So, but we need help from the city attorney regarding about our business at this time. We receive a lot of bill from the water electric company and retroactive from the day we become a owner. But right now, it's, we cannot do business because our location have someone to business it, no license of business it. And the city already sent for me a letter, say they receive my report, they want the investigation. So I get the bill, but they collect the rent, so that means the conflict in it. So I would like the city attorney to help me.
Thank you. Matt Dowd.
Thank you. Just noticing with the speaker cards here, you've got a note now on the bottom. This is a public document. So I just want people to know, they scan these, put them on the internet. So I think you should put up here, name or alias, because the city attorney will tell you that you can legally use an alias, and then just put required at the end, because the name is the only thing required by law. So I think all the other information is optional, and a lot of people aren't aware that the city can put that up on the internet, so all your details are just sitting there on the city website. So can I hand that in, please, to the sergeant-at-arms for the city attorney? Venice Beach, I'm amazed that, like, the stores... See, I complained about, in federal court, about this one spot in front of the Sidewalk Cafe where the musicians had to go. And now finally, after all this time, the Sidewalk Cafe has managed to get the city to move the only space we had, to move it away from the cafe. It's like the worst thing you could do. And then two weeks later, oh, that's another mistake, let's move it again. But how did those people in front of that store get you to do that so quick? So Bill Rosenthal, Tony, took two weeks for that store on the boardwalk to get a space moved. We sued in federal court and all kind of things. I'm waiting for an injunction to knock the whole thing out. But the fact that you moved it twice means that it just wasn't right, and we wanna make it right. And this council, you really need to get together somehow and figure out how to just fix this and get it over with before the judge wipes the whole thing out. Because the city doesn't even have a contingency plan in the event of an injunction.
Zumadog, it's your turn to speak, Zumadog.
Have him removed. Yes, good morning, Los Angeles, Zumadog. Oh, thank you for having me here. Thank you for everybody on the streets that has encouraged me to come back. LACityNews.com, if you like to catch up on the last 30 days of the fraud, waste, and abuse, LACityNews.com, live web feed. And I hope Candido Mares does not have to keep coming here about his issue. I hope Tony Curtis will honor his wishes. The great Candido Mares, who 60 Minutes has contacted over some information he has about DWP. Now, speaking about investigations, oh, I happen to have heard Councilmember Eric Garcetti. Isn't he Mr. Pro Affordable Housing? Isn't he Mr. Compassionate? Isn't he Mr. Under FBI and, he's under FBI investigation, his office is, over affordable housing scam? That's right, Mr. Perfect Affordable Housing, Mr. I'm running for mayor. The FBI is in town, and they are investigating the affordable housing project in Eric Garcetti's district. You might have noticed when L.A. clients wrote about it, they didn't say what district it was in, and they didn't say who the council member was. So Zumadog did some investigation. It was Eric Garcetti's district. So now the FBI, oh, I see Eric's not here today. I wonder, maybe he's currently being questioned by the FBI as I speak, because his office under FBI investigation for his email chain, when there was an audit over affordable housing. There were emails going back and forth that was not under protocol, and the FBI had to step in. And some of those emails sent to Eric Garcetti's staffer, who was hired three months after she just got paid for an expensive consulting gig with this company, and as shady as it gets. And so finally, the day of reckoning, and hey, what happened, you guys? I walked away for 30 days, the whole city fell apart. I see the mayor on CNN, and by the way, Richard Reardon says, you're bankrupting, you don't already know it. And he said, you're looking like a bunch of amateurs. I say you're...
Mr. McDonald.
I did you greetings from McDonald, Inc. Can you hear me now? All right, I wanna say good morning to you, Mr. President, and city council members. Alan Moscow McDonald Jr. And I wanted to say, first of all, I've been around Los Angeles since 1966, grew up under Mayor Tom Bradley. And of course, I wanna recognize city councilman, District Eight, Bernard Plucks, he's a friend of mine, he's known me for quite some time. And I am a spiritual son of Mayor Antonio Viegosa. I wanna recognize also the president, Moscow McDonald Jr., the McDonald Administration in Washington, D.C., and the administration, which includes Dr. Conradice Rice, Supreme Court Justice Clarence Thomas, also Dr. Carl Lewis, Dr. Carl Douglas, and also Mr. Mike Greenspan. I thought we were here for this, may I want to do you greetings from McDonald, Inc., which I am a sole owner. McDonald, Inc., of course, we renovate all around the world. We've also renovated DeFla, also, also in Iraq, Iran, Afghanistan. Right now, we're currently interested in the renovation and the upbringing of the city of Los Angeles. We're also building Youth of America Broadcasting Network and the World Headquarters out in El Segundo. I am also the owner and the founder of Youth of America and the World Broadcasting Network. You founded, currently being built by MGM Group, architectural group out of Las Vegas, they built Las Vegas, as well as Mr. Donald Trump, he's also involved. We're also building there a lot more. You're gonna find, and we welcome you to come out. I talked to the mayor about being involved in this project. We've offered him an opportunity to get involved any way that he would like to. We're currently concerned about the conditions of the city of Los Angeles right now. McDonald, Inc., thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. That completes our public comment for today, ladies and gentlemen. Mr. Clerk, shall we proceed with the next item?
Item five was called special for cards, and an amending motion has been circulated.
Number five, Dr. Williams. Dr. Williams is gone. Cindy Hench.
Hi, good afternoon, Councilmembers and Mr. President. My name is Cindy Hench, I'm from Westchester, and I just would like to offer my support for this motion. I think that through a lot of hard work, you've reached a reasonable compromise, and I'd like to see it passed. Thank you.
Very well. Point of order from Mr. Rosenthal.
Yes, we had elections on Sunday, and Cindy Hench got reelected as president of the council. Thank you for your leadership in Westchester Playa del Rey.
Zumadog. You're gonna pass, Zumadog, Matt Dowd, number five?
You're gonna wave neighborhood councils.
You're gonna pass, that's very well. Ginger Damon, Ginger Damon?
Damon.
Damon, Damon. Ginger Damon, thank you, Ginger Damon.
Hi, I'm delivering this for Empowerment Congress North on behalf of Sean Simons. And on April 20th, 2010, Dunn sent out a memo with the results of NC respondents regarding the rollover funds. This graph had three columns, compliant, noncompliant, and total amounts. At the April 5th, E&amp;N General Manager Kim testified the noncompliant comment actually represented reimbursements of monies paid out to the council's current fiscal year that should have been paid out on the rollover balance due to the freeze that was inaccessible. Councilman Concordion encouraged Mr. Kim to change the title of the column from noncompliant, as it did not represent its contents. NC members spoke out, clarifying that Dunn never requested any information or documentation on reimbursable expenses. Mr. Kim encountered that the calculations came from a forensic accounting study of the NC's expenditures. NC members maintained the inaccuracy of this depiction, but to no avail. The following evening at the Bonk meeting, when Mr. Kim did a complete 180 in explanation of the noncomply with both the council policy and the department's instructions, Mr. Kim admitted that some of the neighborhood councils submitted reimbursement requests, since they were explicitly told not to do so, that many councils did not have the opportunity to submit, had always been asking the opportunity for reimbursement in this year's budgets. Monies that had been taken from... Monies that had been taken from the budget were allocated to be paid from the rollover funds. This murky chain of titles should have been, should not be voted on, and no money should be swept from the N C rollovers until the determination of the city attorney is made on the legality of sweeping monies which N C's had no access to submit, um, or to access to. I submit additional documentation from the Empowerment Congress North now submitting to their items for reimbursement. And I have some papers I would like to turn in.
Sergeant Arms will take those from you, ma'am, right over there.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Heinrich Kiefer.
My name is Heinrich Kiefer. I'm a 30-year resident of Highland Park, a member of the historic Highland Park Neighborhood Council, served eight years. And I'm here to speak on number five in support of what's been proposed in the motion. Although I want to let the council members know that, yes, our neighborhood council had $42,000 in rollover. We were only able to submit about $20,000 for some security cameras and a study along our commercial district. Uh, and so we're taking a pretty substantial hit on that in light of the budget situation with the city. I can't speak on behalf of the council, but I would say, uh, on behalf of myself as a neighborhood council person, I believe we made a very generous contribution, uh, from neighborhood councils in letting our approximately $20,000 go back. So I just want to make that point. I support the motion, the motion on the table. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. No one on the queue. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next item, please.
Item six called special for cards.
Number six, Zuma Dogg. Zuma Dogg, number six, he's not in the chambers. Matt Dowd, Matt Dowd, number six.
Yeah, take your money a minute, sorry, and, uh, talk about the federal money. And here we are having to fix this one again because we didn't do it right the first time. This is like modifications now to our implementation plan. And see, clearly, this, you know, appropriations being decreased, there's cuts all around, but they're because this money is specifically targeted for certain things, and that wasn't happening. And I'm glad we talked about it. Because now we're making these changes, we got the controller making the changes to these, uh, American Recovery and Reinvestment Act funds. And there's some transparency here at least, you know, now we're seeing where some of this money's going. And, uh, but Wendy's right, the city controller about restructuring, there's still structural problems, none of this is going to help.
Very well, that matter. Let me explain something, Mr. Zuma Dogg. We call the name, if you're not here, then it's passed. We're not going to do second and third calls. You weren't here when your name was called. We're not going to hear from you.
I see not leaving, but other people doing it.
Well, you're not, I'm not doing it. If you're not here when your name's called, we're not going to have it again. Next item. We're handling this matter. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next item, please.
Item nine was called special for council member Weesar, and there are cards on that.
Number nine, Mr. Weesar.
Thank you, Mr. President. We're going to take that item up, uh, if we could continue it to tomorrow and take it up with the F S R at the same time.
Take it up tomorrow? So continue that to tomorrow?
Yes, please.
Number nine's going to continue until tomorrow. Next item, please. Without opposition, without, okay, very well. Without opposition, it's continued. Next item, please.
Item 11 called special for cards.
Donna Piraman and Van Nuys. Let's go to Van Nuys for Donna Piraman.
People over there don't know the difference between public comment and public comment and 11. I had put in for public comment. Hopefully, I can get all on number 11. Uh, let's see, I'll have to skip the, but the transit. Anyway, the city had to cut back an equivalent of 289 officers detectives, uh, investigation. Apparently, uh, people rather have transportation over solving and preventing murders. They want transportation and construction over central city services. You two, uh, you choose, public, you make your choice which one you rather have. You make your choice. You have to either, you have to compensate for city services if they take it away. You have to raise money for more taxes. Uh, no ifs, ands, or buts, public doesn't, public doesn't care. We want specifically sales tax, tax on, uh, sport revenues like Lakers, Kings, Dodgers. Our tax is going on luxury items like tobacco tax, alcohol tax, marijuana collectives. Uh, it's better than closing them and being repressive and getting more revenue on them. But you have to be accountable to these, um, and earmark them for central city services only, not for city runaway spending. You have a lockbox, lockup, Angelinos deserve that, to be able to serve specifically city services. Apac, apac is not the way to go. Everybody should stand up, especially city employees, stand up and demand what's due you. Uh, no more furloughs, loss, uh, costs of living increases, uh, nothing else. Uh, and let's get back what they lost. You're highly trained, highly worked employees, and don't need the CRA. We could do less with the city council and out of their spending. People don't want to work. People who don't want to work are work elsewhere judging city employees. You also need to collect unpaid debts. Don't be soft. Collect part of it, or better than none. People, anyway, stop the CRA.
Dr. Williams, number 11, sir.
Number 11, here we go again, the budget. Except it's next year's budget. I would highly recommend that we need a kind of one-day workshop by the C A O as to what the real situation is now based upon what's happened during the last year and what's going to happen during the next three years. Perhaps a one-day session with four hours of presentations, two hours of breakout sections, and maybe a two-hours Q and As, so that the people can understand what he said in January and how it impacts upon our future viability. There's also a matter that we need to see, what were the deficiencies? What lessons didn't we learn regarding 2009, 10? Were there any? I think there were several. Maybe we should also consider the sale of the Department of Power and the reassignment of the Department of Water to the Public Works Department. That would generate quite a bit of revenue and also assist in the budget and get rid of the problems that we're having last week, this week, and probably for the next, uh, two months. So, uh, oh, but councilperson Weesar is not here. But have a scorecard on a webpage as to the level of services provided by each department, both general fund and non-general fund, their costs, and their number of positions that we're going to have to eliminate not only this year, but next year and the year following. So please have a reasonable discussion at least one day outside of the hearings for the C A O to give us a real picture as to what's happening next year and maybe the next two years. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. There was mention that Mr. Weesar's not here. I believe Mr. Weesar is here. Mr. Weesar here? He's right there. Mr. Weesar is here, Dr. Williams. He is in the chambers, in the front row. Uh, he is here, just to correct you on that matter. Mr. Weesar, it was mentioned you're not here, and I wanted to draw the attention that you are here, alive and well. Uh, Zuma Dogg, number 11.
Yeah, yeah, that's sure the problem. Let's clarify, oh, Weesar was here. But let's get to the real issue. First of all, for those of you who just moved to the city, my name's Zuma Dogg. I've been coming here, it's the four-year anniversary of my attending these council meetings, April 2006. At which time, I started to become aware of the, and if I could have complete silence in the chamber when Zuma Dogg's talking. Because I'm the badass who gave you four years and did your job for you. I'm the one who said, hey, Subprime is going to be a problem. Hey, Wall Street, you got pension money and it is going down. We need to see belt tightening. I put each and every one of you to shame, you cowardly losers. So when I talk, it has great relevance, because if you would have did what I said, you'd be sitting pretty right now, instead of having Mayor Richard Reardon say you look like a bunch of amateurs, and that you blew it, and that you're bankrupt and you don't already know it. All right? So I'd just like to say that a bunch of 15 Helen Keller, deaf, dumb, and blank dummies like to sit here and pretend like they had no idea this could have been coming. Oh, how could this have been coming? Well, now the whole city knows that it was coming, that I warned. And that means if I knew, you sure as hell should have known. Because if you didn't, I called you. So now I'm giving a warning, it's a best of looking for bankruptcy, it's a best of looking for bankruptcy on the record. All the people, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Padilla, Weston, sign, sign, sign the clown buffoon that doesn't know a damn thing about anything.
Mr. President, he does, he does not have to get into person.
Zuma Dogg, Zuma Dogg, you're disrupting the meeting. Sergeant Arms, remove him from chambers. You're being removed from chambers, you're disrupting the meeting, and remove you from the chambers. You're ejected. Ankar Patel, Ankar Patel, our next speaker. Mr. Weesar.
I, I, in, for decorum purposes and respect of these chambers, no one should tell our city attorney to shut up. Uh, I would ask that this individual be suspended again for 30 days.
30 council days. Mr. Zuma Dogg is suspended from speaking before this body for 30 council days.
Mr. President.
Mr. City Attorney.
I would suggest it be limited to 30 calendar days because of the ongoing litigation in federal courts.
Then we will, we will go by 30 calendar days, being today the fir, the, uh, this will not be the first day, the first day will be tomorrow, the 14th, 30 days from tomorrow, the 14th. Mr. Ankar, go ahead.
Item number 11, it's about the budget, the budget, the budget. Again, this is the issue. We are bankrupt, you know this. I was again looking at the D W P's budget, and it's a joke. The city attorney will not provide us with information about the budget. I ask, is the D W P allowed not to have a revenue page? They don't have a page on revenue, and this is allowed to go on. So there were previous questions about where do we even ask our questions? The American, the marijuana dispensary people have a lot of questions that they want to address to the city attorney, but they have no one to answer the questions. Same with this, the, the animal person with the banking problem. He can't get his credit cards to work. He has nobody to ask. I have nobody to ask about the D W P's budget. I went to D W P's headquarters, Public Affairs, they give me the number, I call them, they say, call this person, call this person. And I've already, already recited off of the budget. Operations and management is not an acceptable way to explain hundreds of millions of dollars. We need more information, and they're not giving it to me. And at the end of this, the mayor might be on the right side. But right now, with all this, paying this person off here, and this, the head of the budget, right, the head of the city budget crashes the city vehicle. Who paid it? I don't know. It wasn't him, though. And likely, it's out of the general fund. So now this $70 million that the city council is trying to get out of the D W P, that looks very suspicious to me. Why do we need this $70 million? Is it for Villagosa to go fly around Europe in thousand-dollar suits, thousand-dollar dinners? Is that why we need it? And again, there's going to be a right side, and there's going to be a wrong side. And the people on the right side will keep their council seats. And the people on the wrong side won't.
Thank you. That's our last public comment. Speaker for this item, uh, Mr. Concordian. I don't have one, if you'd like to submit a card. Mr. Concordian, you're on the queue? Mr. Concordian?
Oh, uh, Mr. President, forthwith on number five, please.
Okay, we'll make sure that's sent forthwith. We have no other cards on this one. Sorry, we missed the time on that, Mr. Dowd. Please open the roll on 11. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those are posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Perry requests to be excused Wednesday, April 21st, to arrive at 10:30 and for the entire meeting of Tuesday, April 27th, both for city business and both meet council policy.
Okay. Any, uh, those excuses are granted?
Councilmember Parks requests to be excused Tuesday, April 27th, to arrive at 1:00 P. M. for city business, that meets council policy.
And he is excused?
Councilmember Zion requests to be excused Wednesday, June 2nd, to leave at noon for city business, that meets council policy.
Mr. Zion is excused as well.
And Councilmember Reyes requests to be excused Tuesday, May 11th, for city business, that meets council policy.
All right, that excuse is granted as well.
And that clears the desk.
All right, announcements, Mr. Lavange.
Led by you, Mr. Garcetti, today, uh, R.J. Cottle, a member of the United States Marine Corps, uh, ceremony at the cathedral, which is well-attended. Uh, may we never forget him, as we adjourned earlier on. And also, I just wanted to mention this, 39 years ago today, uh, my father died, and this council stood in adjournment for him. And, uh, I remember several years later seeing a certificate that was given by this council, uh, to my mother. Uh, it was a wonderful tribute. So when we do stand, it's an important aspect for civic life to recognize those.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lavange, and thank you to all members who attended that moving tribute to Police Officer Sergeant Major Cottle. Other announcements, colleagues? If no other announcements, can I please ask you to rise for our adjourning motions, please? If I can ask everybody in the council chambers to please rise for, out of respect for the fallen, if I can ask everybody, please rise, thank you. Um, I'd ask colleagues, we first adjourn in memory of Dixie Carter, um, who was not a native of Los Angeles, but she certainly was one of our brightest stars here. She died this Saturday at the age of 70. Um, she was a personal friend, uh, her daughters are very close friends of mine, and I spent, uh, and have very many fond memories of Dixie Carter and her husband Hal Holbrook, uh, hosting holiday parties that were the most vibrant and alive and family-filled, um, parties you can imagine here in Los Angeles. She was somebody who loved life, was one of the great performers, um, of our time as an actress and as a singer, um, and as somebody who inspired so many. She passed away in Houston from complications from cancer. She had a long career as a stage actress and a cabaret singer, uh, whether it was Broadway or whether it was television, very well-known, of course, for her role as a star in Designing Women, um, or whether it was her singing career. Um, she trained as a dancer, uh, she had incredible talent. Originally from Memphis, uh, sorry, originally from Tennessee, um, she went to Memphis State University and got a bachelor's degree in English. Her first stage work was a 1960s Memphis production of Carousel, and then she debuted off Broadway in A Winter's Tale in New York Shakespeare Festival in 1963 for Joseph Pap. He told me that some of the biggest successes in New York were country bumpkins because they were so unsophisticated, they'd try anything, she said. She gave up acting when she married investment banker Arthur Carter in 1967. Um, her own maiden name was Carter as well. Um, but she was brought up in the South, and she said, quitting your career to be wife and mother was what she did. And my whole life, I'd been an actress in spurts because my family is more important to me than anything else. She restarted her career in the 1970s with a role in the soap opera, The Edge of Night. Um, she had many TV roles, including Different Strokes and Filthy Rich, which would provide a connection to her star turn on Designing Women. Um, she was married to Hal Holbrook in 1984, um, and Hal Holbrook appeared on Designing Women as her suitor, Reese Watson. She was nominated for an Emmy in 2007 for her role as a mother-in-law on Desperate Housewives, and she also appeared in the drama Family Law from 1992 to 2002. In addition to Holbrook, Carter is survived by daughters Mary Dixie and Jenna, and a sister, Melba. Uh, she was divorced from Arthur Carter and actor George Hearn. Um, she was an amazing woman. I know Los Angeles and this country is, um, worse off for her passing. May she rest in peace, Dixie Carter. And Ms. Hahn.
I'd like us to adjourn today in the memory of, um, former Cherokee Nation Chief Wilma Mannkiller, uh, who was one of our nation's most visible American Indian leaders and one of the few women to lead a major tribe. She died Tuesday. She was 64, and she passed away also from cancer. Um, she was the first female chief of the Cherokees from 1985 to 1995, and she led the tribe in tripling its enrollment, doubling employment, and building new health centers and children's, um, programs. Obviously, she says she was teased over the years by her surname, Mannkiller. Uh, but, uh, one of the quotes I think is worth mentioning, "Friends describe me as someone who likes to dance along the edge of the roof," she wrote. I try to encourage young women to be willing to take risks, to stand up for the things they believe in, and to step up and accept the challenge of serving in leadership roles. I learned a long time ago that I, I can't control the challenges, the Creator sends my way, but I can control the way I think about them and deal with them. Uh, she was an extraordinary woman, uh, and, uh, I would ask that we adjourn in her memory. Uh, she was an extraordinary woman, uh, and, uh, I would ask that we adjourn in her memory. She certainly is a woman that inspires me, uh, and as well, as I'm sure a lot of women who are still looking to break into, uh, arenas that do not have, uh, many women, uh, leading, um, as role models. So, uh, she, she was a great woman for this nation.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Lavange.
As I think we all know, the tragedy that struck the Republic of Poland with the President Kaczynski and First Lady Maria Kaczynski, uh, I asked me to stand in adjournment. Yesterday, I paid a visit on behalf of the, all of us in the city, to the Polish consulate to extend our condolences. Uh, the First Lady was here three years ago. Ms. Perry was able to greet her, as well as myself, and she enjoyed, uh, this chamber and, uh, the engagement. And, uh, to the great people of Poland in this tragedy where all their leadership was perished in this accident, as they went to, uh, memori-, commemorate a tragedy of seventy years ago during World War II, we should stand in solidarity with them.
Thank you, Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of William Bill Ellis. Uh, this council has honored him several times, uh, Black History Month, and then also, uh, recently when the Tuskegee Airmen received their gold medal at the White House. Uh, he was born, uh, April the 24th, uh, 1916, and passed away April, uh, 2010. Uh, he was raised, educated in Washington, DC, attended the Armstrong Technical High School from 1935 to 38, minors, Teachers College in 38 with a major in science. In 1940, he attended the, uh, Terrell Law School for a period of one year prior to entering, uh, the, uh, war, uh, World War II. Uh, in February 1941, he entered and then, uh, the segregated US Army and was assigned to Fort Meade, Maryland, and was sent to Officer Candidate School in Fort Mammoth, New Jersey for ninety days of training where he graduated Second Lieutenant. He served as a platoon leader in the Signal Corps. Uh, he applied later and was accepted as a pilot trainee at the Tuskegee Air Flying School and was assigned to, uh, single-engine, uh, 43G, not as a aviation cadet, but as a student officer. Uh, he successfully completed the pre-flight, the, uh, primary, the basic and the advanced flight training before graduating to, uh, from Tuskegee, uh, Army Airfield with a Class 43G. Uh, upon graduation, uh, he was a member of a variety of well-known fighter groups, the 332nd Fighter Group, 301 Fighter Squadron, uh, where he flew P40s and Warhawks. Uh, he was one of the, uh, very first group of nine fighter pilots that volunteered to be assigned to the 477 Bomber Deer Group that was, uh, stationed at Siegfried Field. Uh, it was a newly-formed, all-black unit. Uh, he was also one of the first of the nine fighters pilots to be sent to Mathers Field in California where we see fighter, uh, fighter training or bomber training at the B25s. In 47, after, uh, the 447, the 477 Composite Group was deactivated, he was reassigned to the 332nd Fighter Wing. Uh, he, later, after, uh, leaving the military, went to the Calipit, Pillow Club and was successfully, uh, let's see, I'm, I'm sorry, later, after he was deactivated, he was reassigned to the 332nd Fighter Wing and the 99th Fighter Squadron as a single-engine pilot, fly, flying P47s, uh, in the, uh, Lockborn Air, uh, Army Base in Ohio. Uh, he also, uh, retired as a First Lieutenant, voluntarily left the Armed Forces in April of 2, of 1950. Uh, he went back to school, uh, also received his bachelor's degree in accounting and business. He worked for, as a financial consultant for many years. Uh, he is a founding member of the Western Regional Chapter of Tuskegee Airmen Incorporated, later named the Los Angeles Chapter of Tuskegee Airmen, and, uh, also, he's a member of the Scholarship Fund. His moral service is pending, and he's survived by a host of family members.
Thank you. Do we have any other adjourning motions? Uh, let me just establish for the record that, uh, I know he's gone, that Mr. Dowd was disruptive to the meeting, um, as we were doing our adjourning motions, and, uh, just want to make sure that was on the record. If you can, please call the roll.